I'd like to call the meeting into order. For those who care to, please rise for an opening prayer and a salute to our flag. If you wouldn't bow your heads with me, dear men and fathers, thank you for staying, thank you for the time we could spend together, thanks for the attendees tonight, thanks for all the things that you've allowed this city to do, allow us to move forward, allow us to make the decisions that you want us to make, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Let's leave this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome our Cub Scouts tonight, our Tiger Cubs from Den Five, Pac Seventy Four, gentlemen, welcome. And we have, when I call your names, stand up. Brody, Brody Becker. Right there, big dog, right there. Braxton Zenter. Watch your step there, Braxton, thank you, sir. Mason Mitchell. Devon Burksfield. Devon Burksfield, not here? Anthony Sheffield. And Houston Bonstead. Come on up, Houston.
Sneak out in there.
Sneak out in there, Houston, come on in. Watch your step there. Get on in there, gentlemen. Great idea. And their ded leader tonight, Ryan Zenter. Welcome, gentlemen, thank you. Guys, did you have fun taking the tour?
No.
No, okay, well, it's one of you, couple of you got to sit up here, but I think tours are like that at City Hall, I can understand it, so, welcome, hope you guys enjoy. Ryan, there's a packet of information out there if they want to follow along with some of the stuff, a yellow packet. Lynn, can you grab a couple of those packets out there, the yellow ones, if we got any?
What's that?
Packets?
Oh, yeah, I got it.
Take care of it, chief. I know. Do you guys want a picture taken up here?
No.
Okay, stand right here. Here, stand right here. Turn around.
You look sleepy.
Turn around, Houston, turn around there. He'll face camera there, buddy. Houston, get your arms. Anthony, you gotta look up. All right, gentlemen, have a seat, good job, good job, have a seat. All right. That's all. No, can't make stuff up like that. Oh, man. That's great. Tonight, we'd like to recognize some lifesaver awards. We've had some things happen in the city over the last couple of years and like to recognize a couple of different individuals within the city and certainly help people in a way that you sometimes don't realize until it really happens. So, I'd like to read one for Austin Beshears. And we had an incident at the Republic Aquatic Center on June 22nd, 2014. A emergency situation required CPR to be performed on a patron. Thanks to the knowledge and quick action of Austin Beshears, the patron was revived and ultimately alive was saved. So, we would like to acknowledge and thank Austin for his heroic action and for his service to the city and the community. Austin, thank you very much. Please stand up. By the way, that's Mr. Beshears, Councilmember Beshears' son, right? The heist did not give it away, sir. Another item we have tonight, too, Mr. Wallace Willard is here with us tonight. Can you wave to Mr. Willis or Mr. Willard? Thank you. I'm gonna give a short narrative of the respondents on this one. On May 7th, 2014, at 7:52, Engine One and Engine Two responded to a medical call at South Pine for a male subject having a seizure and trouble breathing. Engine One arrived along with Cox ambulance, they were informed that CPR was in progress and the patient was in full cardiac arrest. Captain Tim King and the Cox ambulance staff started patient care. CPR was started and one shock was given. Engine Two staff arrived and took over doing CPR. Firefighter Adam Brown took over compressions while Captain Lynn Morgan was delivering breaths and Engineer Travis Lisca was helping the paramedic. The Cox staff shocked Mr. Willard one more time and the patient regained the heart rhythm. Mr. Willard was transported to Springfield Hospital. Firefighter Adam Brown rode in the ambulance to assist the ambulance crew. When Mr. Willard left the residence, he was trying to breathe on his own and had a good heart rhythm. And Mr. Willard is, thanks to those efforts, is here with us today, and we certainly are glad you're here today. Firefighter Adam Brown, Captain Travis Lisca, Captain Tim King, and Captain Lynn Morgan, we'd like to present lifesaver awards to you, gentlemen.
We're blocking the fire. You're all right. We'll win the first out.
I'll start with Tim King, you're first, Captain Tim King. Last, not the last, but you're last, but that's all right. Adam Brown. Last but not least, Lynn Morgan. And we'd also like to thank Mr. Wallace, who's standing for attending tonight, sir, I wanna shake your hand. I'm glad, I'm glad they were there.
They were, I was told, they were very professional and look at me, no dangers or no, I didn't have a mind when I went in, so I came on.
You can't write stuff like that, that's awesome. He better not jump. Hype is a wonderful thing, Mr. Johnson. It's all right.
I wouldn't know.
All right. You guys wanna stay, leave? We've got plenty to cover, just whenever you guys are ready, just.
You can move to the back.
You can, yeah, if you wanna move to the back, you can, too, if that's what you wanna do. No, John.
No, no, no.
Council will be able to stay up here, Mr. Jones, thank you very much, I appreciate that. All right. You know, those guys, in all walks, whether it's the Aquatic Center or the Fire Department or the Police Department, they do that constantly, working and working with people like that, and sometimes you win, sometimes you lose, and this, both instances were wins, and that's a huge, that is huge, so, certainly wanna thank them as well. On to the next item, I'd like to have a report with Chamber Commerce, Mr. Chamber Director Ron Peabody's here, along with Chamber President Chris Burris. Chris, are you gonna speak tonight, or is it just, you're gonna leave it up to him?
If I pass out after 20 minutes, he might.
Ron gives updates, sir.
Thank you. Again, ladies and gentlemen of the council, the mayor, city, it's an honor and a privilege to come talk to you tonight about the chamber, kind of what's going on and where our vision's taking us. Our chamber's mission is to provide leadership that supports the existing business community while promoting favorable economic growth and development. We work together as a community of businesses profit and not-for-profit, community leaders and residents to serve as the stewards of positive future growth while maintaining the great traditions and personality unique to Republic. In the past year, our chamber membership has doubled to over 170 active chamber members. This is a direct result of the chamber showing our businesses that we care about them and their success here in Republic. Our executive board now consists of 12 business owners and community leaders who are spearheading the chamber's involvement of economic growth in the, of our community. And we realize, especially as we've seen this growth, that we cannot do this alone. I'm here tonight to share the ideas of where we're going and how the chamber and the city can get there together. The chamber realizes that in the past, the lines of communication with the city and the council has been lacking. I know for us, and I've been here a little over a year, the first time I've been here, and I wanna make it many more times so we can open those lines of communication. We must open those lines and work hand-in-hand to ensure the city, its businesses, and its residents are receiving the goods and services that they want and they need. We must open our doors to potential businesses that wanna relocate to the area. We, as well as the sitting or city, are getting calls almost every day from businesses and potential residents interested in relocating here. We must ensure that those inquiries are taken by the hand and given the best opportunity to actually relocate here. We have an unlimited resource of successful business people in our chamber and our community that can help secure these businesses. We wanna work side-by-side with the city, with the council, to maximize the opportunity for this new business growth and ensure our current businesses are getting the services that they require. It's a great time to be a part of Republic Missouri, I think we all know that. Let's take advantage of our talents and what our city has to offer and work together to make Republic an even better place to live. The chamber, we see Republic moving forward, and we wanna be a part of that moving forward. We've been given the opportunity to update the chamber offices in a new location within the city. Along with that, we're considering expanding the chamber office into a full-service enterprise center. The board has been working with building owners, architects, investors, and chamber members to put together what we are currently calling the Repmo Enterprise Center. I brought an architectural interpretation of the facility. Again, it is just a conceptual drawing, if you will, of what our ideas of what this center should look like. The center will house the chamber office, conference and boardrooms, and several business tenants who will have access to all chamber services to ensure their success. The goal is to help small businesses, whether startup businesses or expanding businesses to grow and eventually fill open office and retail space throughout Republic, fostering a more organic growth. Our next step in the enterprise center is to finalize the design, start to secure funds for the build-out, and actually find tenants who would be a good fit for the center. The Repmo Enterprise Center will be a destination for businesses to get the answers they need as well as services to continue their successful growth. This endeavor will be costly, yet we feel this service is needed, and with the right business plan and our forward-thinking executive board, we feel we can achieve the required funding from private investors and business entities. We want the city and the council as a partner in making the Repmo Enterprise Center a success. Another partnership we would like to explore is building new "Welcome to Republic" signs on both ends of the town. I know a lot of you have seen the ones that we have, they've been there for a while, and I personally and the board, and I'm sure the council, do not feel that that properly represents what Republic is. Do we have the answers to that? No, not yet, but with us working with the council, sharing ideas, I bet we can get that figured out. Once again, on behalf of the chamber, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to meet a lot of you. The chamber is there, I'm there. After the meeting, I'll definitely give you one of my cards, some of you have it, just so if you ever have any questions about businesses and/or what's going on in the chamber, you can give me a call. Are there any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Ron, and the chamber, they've done a great job, especially over the last couple of years of moving that organization forward, and certainly appreciate your time, and you too, Chris, and you can say something anytime you want, and you're other chamber president, so.
He does a good job.
Okay, there's eloquence and brevity, I give you that, so, thank you very much. I'd like to open it up now to citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, sign, and give us your best three minutes. Seeing none, citizen participation closed. Like to have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries, thank you. On to financial report, welcome Mr. O'Donnell, please give us overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I would like to welcome and introduce our new finance officer who's with us tonight, Mr. Don Schrodel. Don comes to the city having various financial management positions in the private sector, including operating his own accounting practice, so we're looking forward to Don's contributions in making the finance department that much better. I trust everyone received their financial package. I'll just briefly touch on a few things. As usual, our cash balances remain strong through the end of March at 7.7 million for all the funds. Our, excuse me, the revenue and expense recap is a little bit different, and that's, this is why I've also included previous year information now on our monthly recaps. This was the month where we basically, as you know, at our previous, at the previous meeting, I introduced the recap for 2014 revised to reflect revenues and expenses that were recorded in the current year but belonged to the previous year, such things as property tax revenues and the like. Conversely, if they had to come out of 15 to go into 14, and that's where you see the adjustments here, this results in a current deficit position for some funds and a position in the black for others. However, happily, it is slightly better than this time last year. It's not an unexpected position, and we expect to see that increase and improve over the rest of the year. The rest of the information is pretty much as you receive every month, and so with that, I will entertain any questions that you have.
Questions, comments, discussion, Mr. Clinkinbeard?
I trust most people probably got their property tax assessments in the last week or two, and I saw pretty much the average across the board looked around 6%. Have we looked at that yet and how that'll affect our budget this year? Is that, what kind of money are we talking there?
That's, that is on my to-do list, so we will be looking at that. And I hope to have more information at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments, discussion, Mr. O'Donnell? The one thing you forgot to mention is Don's a White Sox fan, which counteracts the two Cardinal, or two Cub fans we have in the house, so that's a good thing. Appreciate that, Don.
For who?
I'm sure it's gonna be for Don.
Without showing his valuation.
Just like the season, it's early yet.
It's early and over. Any additional questions, comments that are pertinent to Mr. O'Donnell? Need a motion to approve financial report?
Motion second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries, thank you, Mr. O'Donnell, appreciate it. Forcing staff, Mr. Christie?
I do have a couple of things over marking this day, because two months from now, we may be pulling this tape back up and saying, you know, that we're done and over, because it is our year, we're three and two, so we're above 500.
Worst time in years.
Yep. Anyways, there are a couple of things I do wanna bring up. One, I did not get it on my report, because I wanted to bring it up verbally tonight. I think everybody's well aware of the jail situation. Sheriff Arnott's decision about a week and a half ago to close the jail to municipal prisoners, anybody that's caught on DWI, municipal warrants, any sort of thing. We're not alone in Republic. It's all of Green County, including the city of Springfield, it's created quite a dilemma on what to do. Fortunately for us here in Republic, we have a new facility, a new police facility with state-of-the-art jail cells. We haven't used them since dispatch has been closed. We have been taking all of our municipal prisoners to the Green County Jail, so we are in the process right now of getting those cells back up to operation again, doing what we have to do to try to put our cells back in the jail business so that we have some facilities that we can put some of our prisoners in. We've also been in touch with the other cities within Green County excluding Springfield, Willard, Battlefield, and Stratford, along with Groves, and we may be able to provide a helpful solution to them as well. So, we're working on that, and that is something that we hope to have ready to go for the mayor's meeting on April 30th.
How many cells do we have?
We have, we can house 22 prisoners, and the number of cells in chief, I think, may be outside, but.
Stand guard.
I think, I think it's seven cells, I don't recall. Do you know how many we have? That's not including the big one in the back, is there?
You have four cells in one day.
Yeah, so five in total, but when they're all finished out, we can, we can house up to 22. And with that, that's all I have for tonight.
Did you want to mention possible works?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I put that on the bottom of my report, work session. We haven't done this for a number of years, and it's something the mayor and us have talked about, potentially doing just a separate standalone council workshop, just to go over policies, procedures, anything new that's changing the law, and Ron can bring us up to speed on what can and cannot do, there's things that are changing in the sunshine law all the time, so what I was going to do is look for some dates at the very beginning of May, and I can email and call different council members and try to come up with a good coordinated date where we can just have a standalone workshop just to go over policies and procedures, so I'll work on the dates and see if we can figure out something for a very early part of May.
Keep that on the schedule, because that's gonna be a separate meeting, other than this. Anything else?
No, that's our time.
Mr. Beshears, I wanna clarify one thing about our jail. We only send about one and a half prisoners a day to Green County, so the jail problem is not created by us or anybody else, it's really, it's Springfield issue, but we're getting the numbers in from the other communities as well. But we only sent, I think we sent 580-some last year, so really, it averages out about one and a half a day. So, even with we, with us housing 22, that's not long-term, that's overnight, that's maybe a day, day and a half, so, hope that helps, kinda clarify for that. Mr. Darson, anything, sir?
Nothing.
All right, fair enough, but on to future community events. Tequila, you're welcome, sir.
Good evening. April 14th through May the 7th, we offer arthritis foundation exercise program at the community center. We offer that at 1:30 PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays. April 20th and 27th, those are Mondays, we offer toddler open gym at 10:00 AM, that's for ages zero to five and no registration is required. April 15th through May the 13th, senior bowling, we hold it on Wednesday. Various time slots are available throughout the day and it's held at the Republic Community Center. April 17th through May the 8th is Todd Academy, either 10:30 AM or 12:30 PM, that's for ages two to five. On April 25th, the farmers market begins at the Orsland's parking lot, that's Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. This week, I'm sorry, a week from Friday, there's our opening night at the AMP, we're really excited about that. We're showing the movie Tangle at 7:45, that's to be preceded by a lot of activities beginning at 6:30. There'll be a meet and greet out there with Rapunzel, Flynn Rider, family games, and all kinds of good stuff to do out there. We're gonna have Spangle the Clown doing face painting, I mean, Spangle the Clown doing balloon art and Daisy Mae doing face painting.
Glad you got that straight, man.
It'll be good stuff, so really looking forward to it, and then as the night comes to a close, we're gonna release Skylanders, this is a big evening, so. And on April 30th, the movie is yet to be announced, but Senior Movie Day at 3:00 PM at the Republic Community Center.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harder's always open for those senior movie ideas, I'm sure he is.
Interstellar, without.
No.
Three hours out of my life, I'll never get that. We don't want another three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. On the board commission committee's schedule, important adjustments, May 7th, capital improvements, April 29th, city councils, April 27th and May 11th, and planning in zoning is April 20th. There's not any items under old business or table items, however, we do have a resolution under other business and Resolution Number 15-R-27, a resolution of the city council, the city of Republic of Missouri declaring the results, the April 7th, 2015 municipal election to elect four council members. Like to have a motion?
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. Brandon, would you like to give the overview?
I would love to.
Thank you.
This is our resolution that we do each year after the election to certify the votes. At the time that we did the packets, we did not have the certified numbers back from the county clerks, so we do need to make an amendment to add those certified numbers into the resolution.
Questions, comments, discussion?
Should be a motion.
I'll make the motion.
To add the numbers as certified by the county clerks.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
If I'm indicated.
Fair enough, have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion, second. Need discussion on the motion? The motion is second. All in favor of amendment motions, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries, aye. Further discussion regarding the resolution? Anything at all? Fair enough, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions? Motion carries, thank you very much. And now, Colonel Paxton will swear in. Ward one, Jeff Clinkinbeard. Ward two, Jerry Poole. Ward three, John Jones. And ward four, Mr. Daniel Harder.
Would you like to, meet me at the.
Oh, he didn't even ask.
Yeah, he didn't, he didn't even ask.
He's rippy.
He's a recount.
You ain't the hero, are you?
I'm catching a larva.
What?
I'm catching a larva.
All right, if you would please raise your right hand to be that for me, please solemnly blank with your name. I blank.
I am a hardger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess all the qualifications.
That I possess all the qualifications.
Described for my office.
Described for my office.
By law.
By law.
That I support the Constitution.
That I support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
And the provisions of all laws.
And the provisions of all laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
Of that these cities.
Of that these cities.
Of this class.
Of this class.
And the ordinances of the city of Republic.
And the ordinances of the city of Republic.
And that I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Believe myself and office.
Believe myself and office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Notice how he took that real small chunk for us. Thank you. Appreciate you.
Gotta work with the crowd you're giving.
All right. Next item on the agenda, I will take nominations for the election of mayor pro temp. Daniel Harder was the election of the mayor pro temp, I will take nominations now. Mr. Wilson?
I'd nominate Daniel Harder again.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay. Second, and. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor of Daniel Harder, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any extensions?
Same.
One extension, motion carries seven to zero to one.
I'm not sure.
All right, thank you very much. All the new business? What type? All right. Thank you very much. On to new business. Would you like to have a motion of the first reading of bill number 15-08? Motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any extensions? Motion carries.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic of Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to execute a transportation alternative funds program agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission for the construction of the Route 174 Trail.
Thank you, Brenda. Welcome, Mr. Brock. Please give us an overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Just prior to Thanksgiving last year, the city council authorized two grant applications for some bike and pedestrian funds through OTO. One project scored number two out of all of OTO region.
Eric, thank you so much.
Thank you. One project was second to last, but let's not forget on that loser. Our funded project is Highway 174 Trail. This is a multi-use trail that would extend adjacent to Highway 174 from Main Street to Lindsay, and then we would change over to concrete sidewalks leading up to the Green County Library. We see this as phase one with additional pedestrian or bike facilities extending westward on Highway 174 as well as east under the railroad pass, across Highway 60, and linking up to the Shooter Creek Trail. So, this bill is the formal acceptance of the grant. It is a program agreement with Missouri Highway Transportation Committee, and it sets out all of the rules and regulations we would be required to follow to accept $250,000 in grant funds. The city's total cost is expected to be just over $78,000. Our expenses for this year, 2015, would really be limited to preliminary engineering and potentially some right-of-way acquisition. We're estimating about $14,000 expense in 2015. We did not set aside any budgeted funds for this purpose.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock? Mr. Clinkenberg?
Are, at this point, are we just discussing the acceptance of funds, or have you already done much engineering or design on this yet?
We did a preliminary study looking at available right-of-way, the utilities that were out there, the grades and elevations. And as you can see by our, our illustration there, we think that alignment on the north side of the road would be preferable. However, that will be revisited once we have engineers on staff and get into the weeds, so to speak, on particulars.
One thing that I would ask is that we look heavily in advance at ADA considerations on this for those people that use their wheelchairs and things like that up and down. I know it's been brought to council several times, and make sure that we look at those, go a little above and beyond in making sure that those paths or pathways are good for them as well.
Absolutely. We will meet ADA to a T.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
On this drawing, you're using the south side of the school track. Are they on board with that?
We've had some discussions with the school. In fact, they provided a, a letter of support for our grant applications. It seems to make sense that we don't have two asphalt trails adjacent to one another. So, what we will pursue with the school district will be some sort of cooperative effort. And Jim, I don't know if you want to expand on that any at all.
Yeah. The park that's there, most people think it's a city park, but it's actually a school park. We have a little park-shaped lake is there. We are in discussions with them to have the school district transfer ownership to that to our city parks department. If that were to happen, then we will obviously have to make other repairs to the trail. Probably have to figure out what we're going to be able to do to compensate the school district, which would more likely be within some sort of improvement with the playground equipment that's off to the east of, I guess it'd be the east of the school. So, and they're very, they're very cooperative, very willing, as David mentioned, to get this completed. So, they're, they're looking forward to it. And they want to be out of the maintenance of that park facility as well.
With doing that, we would have to, there's two foot bridges. We'd have to redo and replace those, I suspect.
Yes. We would, we would have, if for some reason the school doesn't work out, we have the two drainage channels to cross, and so we would have to have some sort of foot bridge. If we're able to work together, this project will replace two of the three foot bridges on the entire walking loop.
Very good. Additional questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock? Anything at all? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nope, moving on. First rate, sorry. It was on the next item. Sorry. Never mind. Moving on. That happens once in a while. We always discuss this at the beginning, too. All right. Thank you, Mr. Brock. We're going to go on to other business now. I can read this. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Just checking.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. On to other business. Resolution Number 15-R-28, a resolution to the city council, the city of Republic of Missouri, authorizing the execution professional engineering consulting services agreement with Olson Associates for services relating to the Shooter Creek lift station improvements. Would you like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion second. Mr. Brock, give us a overview on this one, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. The Shooter Creek Lift Station nearing 15 years old. When it was constructed, the source of the funds were municipal bonds issued through the state of Missouri. And unfortunately, one of the strings attached was that the city could not specify a particular pump brand. The brand pump that was ultimately put in there, Flowserve pumps have, we've had an absolutely horrendous experience with them. As you can see on the table, we've spent almost a couple hundred thousand dollars in the last eight years in repairs, and we purchased a new pump. That really hasn't performed any well. So, just as a matter of, of getting out of these maintenance costs, we have desire to change over to a different brand of pumps. In doing so, there's opportunity for energy savings by converting those to a variable frequency drive. That's very much like a light dimmer switch instead of a 250 horse, a 250 horsepower pump all of a sudden being completely on, running 100 percent. There is a, a variable range that you can operate that at. We have some other needs out there. We, we have a, an age system with waste traveling from the Brookline Station. As waste ages, develops a hydrogen sulfide issue. There's also a manually operated trash basket at that location that essentially acts as a screen to remove debris from the wayside, and that's a, a very, it's a nasty job, but it's also a very physically risky task as well. So, we have a number of, of small household items we'd like to take care of. However, the big issue is changing those pumps out. We've been working with Olson and Associates for about three months, looking at the different things we want to do. We've prepared a scope of work. I do want to introduce John Ford. He's here tonight with Olson Associates. Trent Lovey as well from the wastewater department. And this resolution then would authorize the preparation of plans and specifications to do that, those renovations and improvements at the Shooter Creek Lift Station.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any extensions? Motion carries. Say two. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Brock. On the next item, Resolution Number 15-R-29, a resolution of the city council, the city of Republic of Missouri, accepting an error of consent to annexation from Jeffrey and Laura Cole, property located along the 7400 block of West Farmer 186 in Green County, Missouri. Would you like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Welcome, Mr. Brock and Ms. Nagle. I'm not quite sure you're tag teaming, or who's giving the overview?
We have the honors.
Okay, Mr. Brock.
Jeff and Laura Cole bought a piece of property just outside of town, West Farmer Road 186. Their desire was to build a house using a well and septic. When they went through Green County resource, they found out that soil conditions weren't right for a septic system. They were directed to come to the city and see if sewer service is available. We do have sewer main on the property, and in accordance with our ordinances, they've submitted a petition to annex requesting service to the city. Now, I will tell you, the Coles are here tonight, Jeff and Laura. This is not what they had planned. They do not want to be annexed in the city. However, the way ordinances are laid out, it is a standard. And so, the petition for consent to annex has been presented to the city council for your consideration.
Okay. Snag, would you like to add anything to that?
Oh, the only thing I might add to that is if that is approved this evening, and that particular annexation consent will be recorded at the county, and we'll run with the land. So, if it should sell, that would run with the land. And then, at some point in time in the future, should the city become compact and contiguous to annex that in, then the city would make that request to the county at that time. Future land use plan out of that area is for single-family residential.
Fair enough. Questions, comments, discussion? Ms. Nagle or Mr. Brock? Mr. Clinkenberg?
How does the connection fee, does it differ from being annexed in or not, or where do they?
It is. The impact fees are one and a half times if you're outside the city. Now, we do have a provision on our rates. If you submit a petition to annex, you get the inside rates. If you do not, then you pay 150 percent.
Which is what Laxton Schuler Ridge did for a long time.
I swear, it's not that they are required to annex, and it's just that would get them the lower rate. Is that, or is there something else to it?
We have a bit of inconsistency in our ordinances after we made the adjustment to Laxton Schuler Ridge. We've changed provisions about petition to annex and annexation in order relate to the rates. However, there's another section in the code which says the city may refuse service unless a petition, a consent to annex has been submitted.
So, make sure...
Sorry. Step up the mic when you answer, please, so we can get on tape. Go ahead, Mr. Brock.
So, make sure I understand this. Typically, you would have to annex them, but since it's not compact and contiguous, you're not going to annex them, but then you have, it puts an agreement in place that if the city needs to at any point, they can do it without permission?
The consent is being signed and given.
But the annexation is not occurring?
Correct.
Okay.
It's just a consent. So, at one point in time, when we do, if the city should grow out that far, get closer and closer.
Sure.
And we need to, to annex that property, and the consent has already been approved by city council.
And they're still required to pay the 50 percent surcharge?
No.
No.
Only on, only on the impact fees. That's a one-time connection fee.
Okay.
Their, their monthly fees would be at the inside rate.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
And it's that we can't accept the annexation today because they're not adjacent to any city property, correct? We, we just keep that on file until we are.
Correct.
And then we have the option to.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's why it's recorded at the county level, so it runs with the land.
Sure. So, at any point when you're on down the road.
Okay.
Is that your question, Mr. Mendez?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Clinkenberg, you clear?
I'm good.
Anything? Additional questions, comments, discussion? Anything at all? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any extensions? Motion carries. All right. Thank you. On the next item, Resolution Number 15-R-30, a resolution of the city council, the city of Republic of Missouri, authorizing the execution of contract agreement with Reporting Systems Incorporated for emergency reporting software. Would you like to have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Welcome, Chief Captain. Please give us the overview, sir.
Good evening. For several years, approximately 2000, late 2002, early 2003, we've been using Firehouse Software as a reporting software database and reporting to the state and federal government for a call load in the city of Republic. And in this year's budget and the IT, we had a line item in there to take this to a cloud-based software and get it off our city server to, to free up some space. And when we got looking into it and got looking into the cost, we, there's a couple of other vendors out there that do the same type of data reporting software. And we come across one that was a lot easier to use, more user-friendly. It was cloud-based, can be used with any tablet. So, you don't have to be tied to a terminal like we are now, because we have to use a dedicated terminal with that software loaded on it. So, if we make the switch to this new one, any tablet or any computer with an AirCard will be able to access the data software and upload reports to it. And it was cheaper. We had staff evaluate in the month of March, the recording software from Firehouse Software, fire programs, and emergency reporting. And the staff overwhelmingly come back with a recommendation that we use the emergency reporting and switch. There is some one-time fees here of $749 that will be charged to the city that will, they will be transferring our data off our city server onto the cloud. Once that is done, there shouldn't be any more recurring, or there'll be an annual fee, but there won't be any more one-time fees until we add additional modules to this. And that'll probably come up next year. We can, we'll start building off of this as we go to mobile data terminals and the fire trucks. All of our run reports from 2003 will transfer. We will have problems transferring our occupancy inspection report. However, that's not necessarily a bad thing because we have inspection reports in there in Firehouse Pro, or software now for buildings that no longer exist in the city. That, once you put something in there, you can't delete it. So, like Windfall's restaurant, Brad's, Republic Glass before it was tore down, we still have that data and it's still taking up space on the city server, and we can't get rid of it. So, we will always have the current data stored on the city server that we will be, be able to access. But rebuilding inspection reports is probably, in the end, it's probably a good thing to clean that up. That's it.
Okay. Great. Questions, comments, discussion for Chief Captain?
First of the month is what we'd like to shoot for.
Two questions.
Mr. Mendez?
Two questions. One, I heard you say you will have access to the Firehouse data indefinitely?
Yeah.
Okay.
That is, that's stored on our server. What we, we will quit paying, we pay an annual license fee and maintenance charge, and we'll quit paying that. We'll always own a license. But we're, Firehouse uses a FoxPro system that is a regular, a kind of outdated database. And the only thing Firehouse has done is push out updates that deal with like Windows 7, Windows 8, and Windows 10 when they cut out. The actual backbone of the system, they haven't updated in years.
Right. Okay. I just was curious whether that would sunset or not eventually. It didn't sound like it. Just sounds like they'll stop receiving fixes and updates.
Yeah.
Okay. Second question. This says, your recurring annual is 1788. Is this renegotiable? Do you have to renegotiate this contract periodically, or is this?
Our plan is to sign a one-year contract with them, and then because it's under the spending limit to come back to city council, Mr. Criskie will be able to renew it on an annual basis. We approached him about a two-year deal, a three-year deal. It's still 1788.
Okay. Thank you.
I was looking for a bargain. It just didn't happen, sir.
Mr. Clinkenberg, go ahead.
It might be something after we use it for a year and like it, you know, they might be willing to lock us in it. If they don't reduce the rate, at least lock us in for that rate for several years next time around versus having any rate increases.
Yeah. And I, I think that's probably where we're at. I think if we can get our foot in the door and then come back to them and say, hey, we'd like to renew for a three or five-year deal, they'll probably would. Firehouse Software, we have four seats. Four people can be on it at one time. This is unlimited. And we've had occasions where we have maxed out our four seats. When we get on a Firehouse call, one captain's trying to write their report, the other one's trying to write their report, Lynn and I's trying to add down about the interviews, and we're done. We can't do any more. So, we have people that are setting idle, waiting to use a computer where if they can get to any computer, they can access. We have plenty of terminals. We just don't have the number of seats.
Okay. Additional questions, comments? Additional questions, comments, discussion for Chief Compton?
Mr. Johnson, what does the Google Maps portion, what benefit is that, is that a benefit?
That would, it's a mapping. We don't know what Google Maps is. We don't have a CAD map that we can import into here that we're currently using or that is up to date. And so what the Google Maps would allow us to do is to track the number of calls, and it may be kinda like you've seen the crime statistic maps where we've had X number of calls here. Prime example, we've been to the come and go on Highway sixty probably four or five times this month. So it would have a little dot on there that shows up, you know, gas bill, wreck, medical, and it would help track the map or help track the calls. Come budget time, it would probably be really handy to see where our volume of calls are at, because we get requests all the time. We get requests from Gail, how many wrecks we've had at this intersection, does this intersection need to be re-looked at, redone? We get requests from Mr. Crisky on the number of calls we've taken from the apartment home places. We have to basically go in there with Firehouse, we gotta go in there and pull that out of hand. So...
Allows you to predictively place your vehicles where you need them, too.
Yeah, you can...
Personnel.
If we had a year's worth of data in there, we could pretty much tell, here are our hotspots.
Well, yes, my question is, is it something that should wait till two thousand sixteen? Would you give your benefit this year?
It would be a benefit. It would put us over budget, and I'm trying to stay within the playing field.
Okay.
So that really wasn't a very clear answer, huh?
Very clear answer. You want it, but you don't have the money.
Well, great question. Additional questions, comments, discussion for Chief Compton?
Thank you for doing the research on that. Thanks, you guys, a lot.
It's the staff, because we hit them up for a thirty-day user agreement, and we told them, said, they're the ones that have to use this at two, three o'clock in the morning. Sit down and pick what you want, and they were really pleased with this software, because it is so friendly and user-friendly, and that's the main reason we're paying.
Chief, probably one question on the cons of that one. Not all files are transferred from Firehouse. What do we do with those?
Well, that's the inspection data records in there. We'll still have the hard copies of the records that we have, but we'll still own the data on our server.
Right.
But we rebuild that particular...
Back to the question I asked.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Is every business done every year? Inspected every year?
We try our best, yes.
So within a short period of time, we'd have that back.
And if you need archived information, they have access to it, bottom line.
I was saying, somebody's gotta have a server somewhere, it's gotta...
Yeah, we'll still own that. It'll still be, according to Sean, it'll still be archived on our server.
Okay. Fair enough. Additional questions, comments, discussion? Anything at all?